Hello, everybody. I am calling to order this special meeting. This is a continuation of the Conservation Committee meeting from earlier, I guess, last week. Our first item of business is to call the roll.
Director Russell.
Here.
Chair Vice Chair Gibson.
Here.
And Chair Kohler.
I'm here. Our first item, guys, is to adopt the agenda.
Move a motion to adopt it.
Second.
Okay. Do we have any public comment on the agenda, Terry?
There are none.
Great. Then let's call the roll. Welcome, Monty.
Director Russell.
Hi.
Director Schmidt.
Hi.
Vice Chair Gibson. And Chair Kohler.
Hi. Do we have any public comment on items not on the agenda?
There are none.
Great. Then we're moving on to the General Manager's report for July 2022 is our first item.
Okay, this is an item that we had a board request to carry over from our, from the recent board meeting. So in my understanding is it was related to the demand management part of the GM report. So with that, Director Kohler, I'll pass that on for board comments or discussion or questions to staff.
Sure. I think the concern about the demand management piece, I think we're really just looking for you to unpack that a little bit, or perhaps that's, that's for Carrie because I think it was not entirely clear exactly what, what was being, I think these numbers were not entirely clear, and I think at least some members of the board were uncomfortable appearing to approve them. I think as a general, I think the overall concern was that two of us were not able to be at the meeting about demand management that I think this is referring to, and I think there were concerns about these figures and where they came from. And you know, I think at least I would not be comfortable appearing to approve them since I think part of what we want to talk about today is the need for additional outside consultant support to get some really credible transparent numbers on the potential for demand management. But I'll see what other board members think about that.
I was one of the other board members that wasn't able to make that meeting. I think I was out of town. You know, I think it would be worth bringing an item to the board just to see what it would entail to update the conservation plan that we got from McDowsa a few years ago to see if we could bring that up to more current standards. And I think, you know, as we go through Carrie's presentation today, I, I talked to some folks in the gray water world about what we can do to address some of those deficiencies in the program or just the lack of enthusiastic deployment of the program. So, you know, I mean, I would be, I would be willing to second the motion to bring an item back at a future meeting to discuss updating our conservation plan with McDowsa. So we would at least see what it would entail. I know we're overloaded with consults right now. But, you know, I think as we go forward through the strategic water assessment, it might be good to get an updated plan. So that's kind of where I land on that.
So if I could, I think if the board is asking staff to update our water conservation strategic plan, master plan, that's in the works and what we can, we do have a consultant on board that's been working with us on that. I believe it's EKI. So staff would want to assess which is the right consultant, maybe from historical, bring in McDows to support it. The the other thing I just want to understand from the board, this is a request to take a look at update our broad conservation program and plan. But there may be linkages or interest to the water supply assessment and there's timing. So I just want to get and maybe what we can do is bring some thoughts under water supply update to the next board meeting and, you know, have some alternative considerations for the board to look at based on this discussion.
And Larry and I, I don't know that we're on the same page exactly. I mean, I, it's fine to update the conservation plan, but that's not my interest. I think that the public, as we're going through this water supply assessment, has expressed a very strong interest in having water use efficiency and onsite reuse be assessed as water supply options, and that really has not happened. So that's my interest in bringing McDows forward because I don't know about the other consultant. I don't, I mean, the conservation plan is what it is. It's you, you're sort of seeing that as a separate thing. But we've been talking now for the better part of six, seven months about about seriously, you know, unpacking efficiency and onsite reuse options as part of the water supply assessment, as part of the water supply portfolio going forward, and that really hasn't happened. So my concern about treating that as something separate, we're going to do it another timeframe. This assessment is going forward. It's a very fast moving train. And, you know, we've talked a lot about how, you know, conservation is baked in, and I don't believe that there's consensus on that. So I think what we need is data and we're, we so far haven't gotten it. So I would like to propose that we bring in McDows to update, you know, it, I don't, I don't know, Ben, how the plans all fit together, but I mean, as part of the water supply assessment, we need clear, credible, transparent numbers, which we haven't gotten. The numbers that were provided at the meeting that Larry Bragman and I missed were very, very far out of, you know, out of whack, for lack of a better term, with what we're seeing in virtually every other water district in the state. So, I mean, nobody is claiming three to 4,000 an acre foot for conservation, just at least to my knowledge. The numbers I'm seeing are a completely different level. Some of them are in our three digits, you know, but most of them are somewhere between, you know, you know, 900 and 100 and, you know, 1500. So where we're coming up with these numbers, it's just telling me we are not using necessarily the same process and the same approaches to assessing these things. I mean, I, you know, I provided you a month or two ago with the Pacific Institute study whose numbers are far, far lower. So you know, I think there's concerns about, about our not putting these, about not treating these options on par with our other water supply options, and that makes it much more difficult to do decision making. We need, you know, we can't make fair and informed decisions if we don't have the data we need about what these, you know, about what different levels of investment in these options would cost and the water that they would yield, just like we are with all the water supply augmentation options that we all agree need to be explored and need to be implemented. But we're just for some reason treating this suite of options very, very differently. And I think that's why we need to have McDows come in and level the playing field.
Well, could I, could I just add something? I mean, all the numbers we've gotten on the, the cost estimates are sort of a work in progress. So I think you've, you've got to kind of put what you're saying in perspective of the whole program.
I agree.
I don't think there's any effort to downgrade or disparage or minimize conservation. We all know, just looking at our cumulative water consumption in Marin, it's, it's worked. But I think my concern would be just to have, you know, a more robust review of that integrated into our water assessment of planning as we go forward. So I don't think we can make that decision today. It's not an action item. I think the suggestion.
Can I just stop you there? I specifically talked to the General Manager about whether this could be an action item today. We had.
I didn't see that on the agenda. I think what we can do is make it an agenda item. Yeah, I think that's how it works.
Right.
And when, and when it comes back, well, that's.
It comes back. We already told it's too late to get into the, what is going on here, Ben? We had this conversation a week ago.
That's what my understanding of the procedure under the Brown Act.
Yeah, I, I think even from a substance, there's process and substance, but even from a substance standpoint, I do think it is worth the time for us to have a more, now that we really understand the comments and allow staff to bring back on September 6th a kind of response to some of these comments and alternatives as an action item. So the board could take whatever action we would bring some alternative approaches.
Okay, I'm, I want it noted for the record, and I want it in the minute, in the minutes that I specifically had this conversation with the General Manager on Monday, when there was plenty of time to agendize this. I specifically said that we need the opportunity to, to act on this. So that that failure, I think, is a failure of process on the staff's part, and I do not want to hear that we can't go forward because, you know, yada, yada, too much time has passed. I am very uncomfortable with how this just went. I have to say, I don't think this is right. It was represented to me that this would not be an issue.
Well.
I'd like the General Manager to respond to that. I do not appreciate being misrepresented to, and I think that's a problem. We had a direct conversation about this, specifically this issue.
Can I?
Can.
I would like a response. I would like.
But I get. The response is the Brown Act.
Yeah. You'll get a response from.
I was told.
Hold on, you get a, you'll get a response from the General Manager. I get to talk to. I actually like the, what, whether it's, whether we can approve it today or we can't approve it today, I like the idea that was proposed by Ben that we have alternatives, that we come back and look at some alternatives, and I think that's a good idea.
I agree. I've been asking for alternatives for over six months. I'm sorry to be frustrated, guys, but I mean, this is just endless getting put off. And I've got my own, and let me say, guys, I've got my own Brown Act concerns right now based on this conversation.
So folks, let's, let's try to tease this apart and move this in, in, toward getting something done, which I think is what we really want to have happen here. So from, from a matter of, of making, I want to separate what, whether we can make it, we, can we make a decision today to have the, to do and then to do an analysis, which I want to then make sure we're clear about what we are asking to have happen next? Can we make that decision now, or do we have to move it to the, to the next board meeting to make a formal decision? Is that, is that, and then is that an initial step that we need to clarify?
It says approve, so I think we can do that. Yeah. I don't think it's an issue. We can't do it today. I think the suggestion has been made that we have some other options, other ways to do it. Okay, that strikes me as a good.
So if I'm, if I, if I may, I'm sorry, if I may interject, just on the, the Brown Act issues and what's in front of us today and, you know, any misunderstandings, you know, apologies, but the General Manager's report approval is what's on the agenda today. That was, I believe, staff's understanding as to what was being brought forward. The process for agendizing future items, as I understand, the board policy that was adopted is a first and a second. And, you know, as far as action today, approving the General Manager's report, I think that's on the agenda. Also, if there's just general direction to staff or the General Manager that's within their purview to enact, that's fine. If it's a board action, then it would need to be agendized as we just cast.
Right. And so what, to me, the process that has just happened is there was a motion to add something to an agenda. The next agenda is September 6th. That is when it could be acted upon. That's just, you got to give notice and it's got to be posted, and that's just.
To be required. So to be clear, we are able at every meeting to give the board, to give the staff direction on various issues. Here, that the direction that I'm looking for, and perhaps this is a, you know, not a formal vote, is that we ask staff to engage McDows to, you know, to give us some, some transparency, some openness about the conservation numbers. That doesn't require a motion. That's staff direction, and it's directly relevant and related to this item. So I don't see that we need to the direct, to the, to actually to both items. But I mean, that doesn't generally require a, a motion to ask staff to do that. If the rest of the board doesn't want to do that, let's just be honest and say that. But this is, this is not a new issue with, this has been raised over and over again. And we continue to not move it forward. What would need to be acted on would be to act on some sort of, you know, contract for them, but we do not need a motion of the board to direct staff to engage a consultant, at least we never have in the past.
Well, I mean, I think asking staff to spend district funds to engage a consultant without making that an action item is.
I'm not asking district funds to engage, to spend district.
And I think putting it off a week is, is not prejudicial.
That's fine, as long as we do not hear next week that we can't get this done in time for the water supply assessment. So I have to say, I'm becoming pretty uncomfortable with how long this is getting put off.
Okay, so can I, can I ask then, if, 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 let's, let's, let's be clear that, that this is not, that we're not going to let one week span of time be the reason why this cannot be, but what is being, what Director Kohler is trying to propose is it will preclude it from being included in our water supply assessment if, unless somebody chimes in and says that it, that could be a problem. Let's, let's take that off the table as a problem.
Well, I, I think, of course, we can include at any point in time changes to the water conservation numbers, for example, in the water supply assessment. That said, I do not think we should slow down the project, meaning I think we can do it in parallel. And if the study finds changes, that's fine. We'll make those changes, but we would, I, I believe it's important to stay on track with this project and do whatever we end up deciding to do in parallel.
Okay, so I'm not hearing, I'm, if, I don't hear a saying that we're, that we're halting the study. And I'm not hearing that it's a, that the, it can't, that the, that the water supply assessment study cannot continue in parallel. And that something else will go side by side, and when that information, if that's developed, that will be integrated at a later point. But in essence, what's done so far isn't considered final because we have this other parallel, potentially parallel data being collected. So I think that takes, I'm just trying to help us get down to like what we're actually going to do here. So it sounds like their timing is not a problem. I think that the next question is, is making sure that we're, that we are in agreement about what we are asking in terms of additional work from McDows. So I don't know, Cynthia.
Monty, that, that would be discussed at, on the next agenda.
Right. But I think that, but I think that, but I, I think that, that, that might, I think that the next agenda item would be bringing that would, will, yes, we'll be bringing this up, but I think that before that, we can have a conversation now about what it is that Director Kohler is asking for, so that it's not a new topic, but it's one that we've already had some, some discussion about now, unless there's a problem procedurally with us. At least hearing what the proposal is so that we understand what it is that we are trying to resolve and move forward. Is that, can we take that step now?
I mean, let's, if there's further clarification needed, you know, I thought it was fairly clear, but.
I've been shocked at how unclear things have, have been in high, after the fact. So I don't, Director Kohler, I want to, Cynthia, I want to give you a chance to articulate what it is, you know, concisely of what it is that you're asking to have happen and to see if anybody has any questions or disagreement and, or whether we can then bring it to, to the next board meeting where it, it could be a very short discussion, you know, adding in public comment.
Okay, I thank you, Monty. I think what we need is to have a, to have a, to engage McDows, which has done our, our conservation numbers in the past, to do an analysis to feed direct with the specifically separate from our conservation plan to feed directly into the water supply assessment to assess the costs of various water use efficiency and onsite reuse options so that they can be compared side by side with the water augmentation options that are already part of the plan. So specifically what we need are, you know, what those options would cost at different levels of implementation and what yield they could provide. It's basically what, basically, it's basically just an extension of what they did in 2007. I'm sorry, Larry, go ahead.
I'm just saying, that makes sense to me. It seems like a fairly straightforward task, and we'd fill in the gap.
Right. So, and I would second that motion to get it on the next agenda. So.
Okay, does it, does it, it makes sense to me too, but Jack, does it make sense to you as well?
Yeah, I mean, we'll just bring it up on the next agenda is what you're saying, but that's fine, you know.
So the next agenda then will not be a discussion item. It'll be an approval item. Is that what we're talking about right now?
Yeah, would be an action item.
Is that, does that sound good to you, Cynthia, or is that, or is this?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's, it's fine.
Will, what, what is the, will this slow up the process?
I, I don't think it should or can, which is why I suggested that we work in parallel. For example, on September, the following Tuesday from the 6th, I guess that's the 13th or something. We, we do have a special board meeting where we'll be starting to delve into the supplies. So, but again, I think it can be done in parallel and it should be.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so technically, we are now supposed to be approving the General Manager's report. So I'm going to call for a motion on that.
I just have a couple of questions, Ben. On, on the public outreach numbers, are we doing public outreach now through our volunteer? She used to be our volunteer coordinator. Now I can't remember her name, but she used to do the programs in the schools and that kind of thing, but it was put off because of COVID.
Oh, no. So, yeah, that's primarily right. I'm sorry. I forgot her name is. Someone, Crystal.
Suzanne.
Yes, thank you.
Sorry about that, Suzanne.
Yeah, so a lot of her programs were paused during COVID, but yeah, they, they've come back. So we're back in active.
Okay. Yeah, I think that, yeah, I think that's very important because that's a big part of our outreach is, you know, get, to get the students up to speed to educate their parents, I think is very important. So I'm, I'm glad to hear Suzanne is back, back in the school districts. Thank you, Ben.
Yeah.
All right.
I move approval. Thank you.
I think we need public comment on this item before we vote.
Yes, we have two public, two speakers. I just want to remind them that on the 15 second mark, 15 seconds, and you're close to your time is up in the 15 seconds, you'll hear a sound, and then at the one second, there will be a ringing sound. So the first two, Phil Soder and Ed Jamison. Go ahead, Mr. Soder.
Thank you. And I'd like to echo Director Kohler's comments that there's been a lot of discussion, and I felt for the last half dozen meetings I've attended, we really have been talking past one another. I would like to thank the, the staff for the, the report on conservation, but I noticed among all the items, conservation is the one that lacks very many numbers as to how many acre feet we can actually realize from conservation as opposed to Dsal and EnerTies and local storage options. I, I believing that a picture is worth a thousand words, I put together a table that looks just like the other storage options, and I put it together for demand management slash conservation cost estimate summary. And I forward that to Terry. She said that she wasn't able to put it on the screen so that you could look at it, but she did say that it was put in the director's agenda packet. And I'd like to know if anybody's had a chance to look at that. What makes sense to me is to take demand management and move it, elevate it to the same kind of water supply option as all the others. And I put together a table that shows capital cost, annual O and M cost, total annualized cost, the acre feet of yield and the cost per acre foot, just as we look at the other options. And I, I picked a couple of projects just to add as some filler numbers. And the option, paying attention to staff's concern that conservation isn't reliable, I picked two forms of conservation. One is a reduction of leaks by 25%. And the other is a reduction of leaks by 50%. And I think leaks are about 10% of our supplier, 2,000 acre feet a year. I also put in replacement of lawns, 25% of lawns and replacing 50% of lawns. And I tried to come up with a budget that made sense where we could, we could achieve each one of those things. So rather than waiting till 2040 to get a savings of 4,000 acre feet, this would put in specific projects that we would be looking at with budgets and try to get 3,000 to 5,000 acre feet from demand management and from conservation. And, and also increase our budget in order to do that and to try to do that within the next three to five years. So my suggestion is to take a demand management conservation cost estimate summary just as we do all our other water supply options. Come up with those projects and be able to look at it in parallel with other options and choose the best, the best mixture of those options. Thank you.
Thanks, Phil.
Mr. Ed Jamison, please.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thanks. First, I didn't see this McDows conservation issue on the agenda today. I don't think any notice was provided. Ms. Kohler's demand to yet again make water supply plan based on aspirational conservation savings needs to stop. Forget McDows. We've had conservation presentations on April 19th, May 10th, May 17th, June 7th, and August 2nd. Wasting staff time, wasting ratepayers money on more consultants. You've had at least five conservation presentations over the last four months already, and it needs to stop. Ms. Kohler, stop with your long-winded arguments and stop taking actions off public view as you did yesterday, and as you've attempted to do yet again today. You are not in charge of this district, and your demands to take action in a hastily scheduled meeting with minimal notice is completely inappropriate. Ms. Kohler, stop with your abusiveness, trying to browbeat others into submission. Enough is enough. And this board must not be in any, which started a couple of months ago. That our reservoirs, we have four years' storage, 80,000 acre feet divided by only annual use of 20,000 acre feet. These numbers are numerically challenged. Thank you for your listening.
There are no further speakers. Should I call the roll?
Sorry about that. I was muted. Yes, of course.
We need a second on the motion, please.
I thought we had one.
I did, yeah.
Oh, sorry about that. Okay, I missed a chat. I'm sorry.
Director Bragman.
Hi.
Director Gibson.
Hi.
I'm sorry. Director Russell. Director Schmidt.
Hi.
And Chair Kohler.
I'm going to abstain. Okay, that brings us to the distributed, the next item, which is undistributed infrastructure. Carrie, you're finally getting to go.
Yeah, good afternoon, Board. Carrie Pollard, Water Efficiency Manager. Let me pull up my presentation here. All right, so we are going to have a presentation this afternoon on distributed infrastructure. We're going to really focusing in on rainwater and groundwater systems. Quick overview, we'll take a look at our rainwater programs in these, in these two areas. We'll look at some responses to our customer opinion survey that we did a month or so ago. And then we'll review the status of the already enacted gray water ordinance closing out the next steps. So I wanted to start with kind of a discussion kind of what is distributed infrastructure, just to have a shared understanding. I think it's good also for the public to kind of, you know, get used to hearing these terms. If we look at gray infrastructure, we're starting on the left here. It's our traditional solutions, right? So these would be our treatment facilities, sewer systems, stormwater systems, et cetera. Down on the bottom is green infrastructure. So these tend to be natural ecosystems that, you know, are in the form of infrastructure. So good example would be a habitat restoration project. But what we're going to be looking at today is really focusing in on distributed infrastructure. These tend to be located at or near the point of use, and they encompass kind of a broad range, whether it's water supply, treatment, stormwater strategies, et cetera. And what we're focusing on today is really the rain barrels and gray water aspects of distributed infrastructure. So jumping into a review of our programs, program offerings. So I'm starting to talk with incentives for both gray water and rainwater programs or installations, if you would. We have our laundry to landscape gray water kit, which is subsidized by $100 and available locally to our customers. or installations, if you would. We have our laundry to landscape gray water kit, which is subsidized by a hundred dollars and available locally to our customers. We also have our rain barrel and cistern rebate, that's a 50 cent per gallon incentive up to $1,000. And then recently with the change to our turf removal program, we have incorporated the installation of rain gardens as an option as well to get that higher tier, that, that, that $3 per square foot incentive. Folks need to do one of these items here, either gray water or rainwater or rain gardens. And then we also wanted to note that, of course, we have our gray water ordinance, I have a whole section on that, so I'm not going to go into details on that right now. Wanted to review kind of the program objectives for, for these, these types of, of incentives. We want to increase awareness of them as a local water supply source, right, as an onsite source for, for customers to be aware of. We want to change perceptions around, you know, how these, you know, gray water and rainwater can be used. You know, within our, our service area. Providing education is, is key to kind of, you know, meeting those top two, right, bringing awareness, increasing awareness and changing perception is, you know, how can these, these types of systems be used? What's the value in them? You know, how do you install them properly to code, et cetera? We want to encourage participation through our incentives. Ultimately, of course, we want to promote water sufficiency, right? So we know that there's a high potential to offset outdoor use. We, we've seen prior analysis that shows that about 25,000 gallons of summer irrigation is required for an average house. And so when you think about these types of systems, right, that would be a lot of rain barrels, 550 gallon rain barrels, if you would. Or a 20 by 20 by 10 foot cistern or a 20 foot diameter, 10 foot tall, you know, tank. So we, we realized that that's probably not feasible for many sites, but we know that offsetting any amount of, of outdoor use by using these systems really brings additional awareness, is a benefit for all. And so we're trying to find that sweet spot, right? Give enough of incentive, take down all the barriers to get folks to install these so that we do offset some, at least some of that outdoor use. I have a slide later on on kind of the emerging barriers, we'll, we'll take that up in a moment. And then, of course, our program objectives, we want to offset some of the costs. We recognize some of these systems can be, can be costly depending on the size and complexity. And so offsetting some of that cost is important. We wanted to provide an update on. Sorry about that. Sorry. Hit the wrong button and it all went away. Want to provide an update on how we're doing as far as participation in these programs. So we have our current, what we're calling our current program, which started in 2020. And then we have our past rebate program. So this would have been from 2019 back to 2014. And this was when we had the five by 50 program, you may recall that, right? We had the rain barrels, gray water systems, pool covers, hot water recirculating and mulch, customers can get 50 bucks towards the installation or purchase of any of those, those five items. And so if we do a comparison of, you know, kind of, we made some program changes, how are we doing as far as participation? So for rain, rainwater, we have seen a slight decline. But if you look at the last two bullets, while we've seen less rebate applications come through, the capacity size is almost tenfold, right? So that's, that's, there's a lot of value there. We're seeing much larger systems. So really driving, you know, those, those, those larger systems, which is great. For gray water, we are seeing an increase in participation. And I think, you know, during the drought, when we, the last two years or so, we've had a number of webinars, we're really trying to increase that awareness and, and, you know, make it more accessible for our customers. And so we do see an increase. Still nowhere near where we'd like to be, right? We, we, we understand that, but at least we are seeing some, you know, kind of positive changes based on the, the, our positive uptake based on the, the programmatic changes we've made. Moving on, I want to touch on barriers implementation. I think that this is, is, you know, kind of one of the, the, the key reason, like kind of what we need to tackle to help really increase the, the participation in these programs and just uptake across the service area in these, in these types of systems. One major item to, to note is that backflow prevention is required for all of these types of systems, right? And so I mean, this is a state, you know, regulatory requirement. And so, you know, how can we kind of work with our customers, have a better understanding of what that might mean? Is it, you know, air gap or is it actually a full backflow prevention that requires, you know, annual maintenance and, you know, testing and compliance requirements all around that? So and that's something, something major that we're all very aware of and kind of looking, moving towards solutions on.
Carrie, can I, can I ask a question about the backflow real quickly? So if, let's say you have a rainwater catchment system, it's not connected to your potable water drip system, it's completely separate. Is that what you're calling air gap?
Uh, no, an air gap would be from where the, that, that the, that there's no actual connection to your system, right? So in that, in that, similar, I guess, yes, that is what we're saying. So if there's someone connects a hose to it, then, you know, they're, they're good, but if they're connected to their drip system.
Right, right, then, then they need a backflow to prevent contamination. Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so retrofitting existing infrastructure can be a challenge, right? Which is why we have that, the ordinance in place, right? We want to kind of get that installed upfront. But, you know, in some cases, it does make sense. And, and so the retrofit is, is definitely continues to be a barrier. There's ongoing system maintenance and what I'm calling operational complexities, right? So for a gray water system, ensuring that someone turns their diverter valve, you know, to go down the sewer system when they use bleach or if they use the wrong kind of soap, those kind of things, right? So they're not killing their plants. And, and that just takes, you know, a little bit of, of knowledge and, and a mindset and, and, you know, engagement from our, from the customer, you know, to actually take that action to make the, the installation successful. There's plumbing code requirements, right? So, you know, proximated creek setbacks, et cetera. There's this perception, right, that, you know, gray water could be considered harmful or dirty and, and that, you know, doesn't harm plants, et cetera. So, you know, kind of, again, leaning back on the educational opportunities to help folks understand, you know, that, that it is actually you can use it appropriately and it's not harmful, you know, if, if done right. And finally, finding qualified installers has been something that continues to come up that, that we know we need to, to continue to work towards. And so all these are kind of, you know, continue to, to emerge, the more the, the more installations we get, the more feedback we get, you know, the better understanding we have of, you know, what's, what's stopping folks from really, you know, participating in these programs. To build on that better understanding, we did a customer opinion survey. So we, we reached out to the 30 participants that we had over the last nine months or so to get some feedback on, you know, did they install their system, et cetera? So I wanted to kind of touch on what, what we found from that, that outreach. Unfortunately, we had only 10 responses, but that's 30% of our, of our 30 customers. So, you know, a very small subset, but, but nevertheless, the fact that they one, engaged in our program and two, willing to reply to our survey was, is, is always useful. We asked if they were satisfied with their system. 90% said, you know, either somewhat or very, so that, that's very encouraging. We did ask about some of their main concerns, right? We want to have a better understanding of, you know, while they are satisfied, except for, for that one person. You know, what, what are their concerns? So major one is that backup irrigation is still needed, right? So if they're not there to wash their laundry, you know, then this system isn't working out, you know, as intended for them. As I mentioned about operating the diverter valve, right? So if they, they, you know, do, you know, use the wrong soap or use bleach or, or what have you, you know, it's not always easy. Sometimes it's manual, although they do have systems that are, you know, you push a button and it does it automatically. And so increasing understanding of that, that kind of technology that's available to help, you know, alleviate some of these barriers. Impacts of plant health came up. And then finally, just recognizing that our topography, right, can make it somewhat difficult depending on, you know, the situation of where the house is versus in your, the laundry, the clothes washer versus, you know, where's the irrigation need to go on their property? So good, good, good feedback for us as we move forward. We asked if this was their first experience using gray water systems, most of them, it had been. And, and the fact that they were all quite, for the most part, quite satisfied is encouraging as well. We asked how much did the drought and emergency impact their decision to install this type of system? No one said not much, right? So it was all, it was definitely driven kind of by, by drought emerg.
We lost you Carrie. Oh, maybe it's me.
No.
I think it's Carrie.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think we're all. Camera potentially would help. Carrie, I think we lost you at the beginning. I think we lost you there for a little bit.
My bad. Okay, let me.
I think we got this slide, the, covered the opinion survey. I think it was the, I think you were going on from there.
This one, okay. Sorry. Okay. We asked if they would install, if they would recommend the installation to a friend. 90% said they would. And finally, who installed their system? Was, was they, was a follow-up and most did it themselves, which is again, super encouraging. I think that we can kind of take the fact that many of them did it themselves as, as, as a win, but also recognize that we do need to provide more resources for installers, I think would be useful as well. So in summary, majority of our customers are satisfied with their gray water system. And we feel like we could use these, these folks who responded potentially and others, right, if they're also on board with being satisfied with their systems as our trusted messengers, right, can kind of highlight customer success with, with folks who've done this. When we look at new barriers, they will continue to, to be discovered as more installations go in. And, you know, we recognize that we want to adapt our program to, to align with removing those barriers. And finally, looking at training additional professional installers, we do have a list of installers on our website. Many of them do work throughout the Bay Area, you know, but we're trying to find more, more local installers with that, that heavily coveted 415 phone number so that, you know, they're, they're, they feel like they're local and we don't have too many of those so far, but we'll, we'll work on increasing professional installers through training. Finally, I wanted to touch on the gray water ordinance, the status of the ordinance. So review of the code, it's that states that any new residential or commercial installation of a new service or any applicant applying for an enlarged service through a substantial remodel and is subject to installing a gray water system to the maximum practicable amount. And I included the, the county's definition of substantial remodel, which is what we reference. And essentially, it just states that if 50% of the, of the floor area is, is being impacted or expanded, then, then this would be a trigger. In looking at.
Way to leave that aside.
Yeah.
What is, what do we determine as the maximum practicable amount?
That's a great, that's a great question, Director Gibson. So, and I'll, I'll touch on that. It's really, we, we really are leaving it to the applicant to confirm, right? Because it is their home and their site. So, so what we did is we, we looked back into fiscal year 2020 to present to see how many service connections were, were subject to this ordinance. There are a total of 272. Of those 272 sites, only 28 installed a gray water system. 10 installed a simple system, which is slightly larger than a laundry to landscape system. It's, it's usually a single fixture, no more than 250 gallons per day is generated. So, you know, smaller system, not a whole house system, if you would. And then 18 of those 28 did a laundry to landscape. The rest, which is 90% of the, of the sites, did a self-certification that their site was not feasible. And so we wanted to dig in a little deeper, right? Of course, there's a form that they fill out and submit to us to determine or, or to provide their justification of this not feasible designation. And so we wanted to dig into that a little bit deeper and have a better understanding. So we found that 50% said that they just didn't feel it was a good fit for their site, whether it's, you know, the setback requirement or proximity to creeks, location of landscaping uphill, et cetera. You know, they didn't feel it was a good, good fit. 25% said that the project, that their project didn't touch their landscaping, therefore, you know, compliance with this would have kind of expanded the scope of their project beyond what they had, you know, their permit was originally pulled for. So that was their, their reasoning. 20% had either a real or perceived conflict with the gray water rules and regulations. So some of these might be that they, when they pulled the permit, they weren't aware that this requirement was in place. They did their entire design of their, of their, their, their site and this wasn't incorporated. So, you know, things like that where they, they didn't, they, there was a conflict. And then 5% said the cost was too high. As, as noted, right? So this is done through a self-certification kind of, and that was, is really an administrative process that we do. And so we, we've, we've looked at what are the opportunities for us to consider how we could make some changes, not necessarily to the code, but just of how it's actually implemented internally to minimize those number of exemptions. And so what we're, we're, we're considering is that, you know, applicants not just, you know, fill out our form that says it's not, you know, feasible, but they actually provide some level of documentation as to, you know, what the justification is. And so some of the examples might be that, you know, they did soil testing and, and it, it, you know, there, there really is a drainage issue. Or the average daily production is so low, it doesn't make sense for them to install this type of system. Perhaps their landscaping is, is so small that it wouldn't, again, it just isn't, isn't necessarily feasible. There's state or federal laws that would prohibit the, the use on site, that would be another one. And then finally, looking at something like, you know, if the drain lines are, are in a concrete slab, that again, makes it very difficult for, for installation. And these would be things that, again, wouldn't require a change to the code, but really kind of just tightening up what we're, you know, the maximum practical amount, kind of putting a little bit more, you know, little bit more justification behind it for, for the customers.
Carrie, can I make a couple of comments or do you want me to wait until you're done?
I have just two, two more slides, you want to just wrap up and et cetera?
Okay.
Okay, cool.
Then what page is this?
Uh, that was 21, this one doesn't have a number, this is slide 21. Another consideration that we could do, we should, we could look at as well is just recognizing, right? If 90% of the customers are, are really, you know, avoiding compliance with this, you know, maximum, you know, under the maximum practicable amount kind of language, maybe we can look at other compliance options for, for kind of meeting this same intent of the original gray water ordinance. Those could include things like, you know, if they install a rainwater catchment system perhaps, or even, you know, further reductions in their outdoor water use through, you know, planting natives or further limiting turf area installation of a rain garden, those kind of, you know, and there, sure, there's other ideas out there as well, but just kind of expanding it towards not just gray water, recognizing that, that it's not, it may not be appropriate for, for every site. But, you know, these other options could also provide benefit. So wrapping up with next steps. Looking at our incentive programs, we feel like we can, we can kind of leverage those trusted messengers, we'll work closely with columns to, to, to find folks that we can use to kind of help promote the value of these types of systems. We will move forward on the professional installer training. We have a few, a few various options around training that's already been developed that we can just kind of bring to the service area and offer, which has been proven fairly successful. And then finally, continue to just review our programs and, you know, determine whether or not changes need to be made to, again, minimize those, those, the barriers. We look at the new construction or the substantial remodel item, we can update the administrative process to provide additional clarification on those situations that don't warrant an exemption. We can also provide additional outreach materials for our customers and also the local jurisdictions upfront so that, you know, when they are pulling the initial permit, that it's not a surprise later on in the process that there is this gray water requirement. And finally, there could be a consideration to revamp the district code by alternative compliance options. With that, I'd be happy to take any, any questions. Thank you for letting me finish.
Okay, I think Laurie Bragman wanted to jump in with a few.
Yep.
Yeah, I've, I've got a few and full disclosure, we've had a gray water system for six years in Fairfax. So I have some experience with it and I also helped install it. So if you go back to page 21, there we go. On the non-feasibility, there's a couple of points that I think should be changed. First of all, the average gray water production projected to be less than 50 gallons per day is extremely liberal. I mean, especially when you're talking about a laundry to landscape. I mean, most modern washers are going to maybe use less than 20 gallons in the rinse cycle. And 20 gallons can, can irrigate a lot. So I don't, I think giving an exemption for anything less than 50 gallons a day is really out of step with with modern appliances. And I think that should be reduced to maybe somewhere in the vicinity of 20 or 25 gallons. The area of irrigated landscape being less than 500 square feet, again, 500 square feet is a huge amount of irrigation, that's 10 by 50. You know, that should probably be reduced to somewhere in the vicinity of about 150 feet, square feet. I mean, that's a substantial. I mean, that's a substantial planting area. You could, with twenty gallons a day, you could, you could be irrigating half a dozen large trees in, in your, on your property. So I think those metrics are really kind of out of step with what we're dealing with in most of our single-family homes. The site condition on killey terrain, definitely an issue. But the state code requires mulch pits that are adequate to absorb the gray water. So you, you might have some overflow in the mulch pit, but there's minimum size requirements in the mulch pit. In other words, most gray water systems are not just draining gray water into the landscape. They're connected to these cylindrical mulch pits, which capture the drainage and then it's slowly absorbed into the landscape. So, I mean, pumping water uphill is a different issue. But as far as gray water going into, you know, down slope usage, it, it really is, is not an issue. Saying, another point I wanted to make is on the setback requirements. Under the state code, the setback requirement, it's two feet from the home and one and a half feet from your boundary. It's very, very liberal. And again, under the state code, there's a requirement that you install these mulch pits, which are essentially holes that are lined with a plastic pipe that collect this drainage, drainage water and hold it, and then it's absorbed into the landscape. So it's, it's really not that big of an issue. Even, I might say, even where you've got a concrete slab foundation. In our instance, we had a concrete perimeter, we have a concrete perimeter foundation. And, and so what you, what we did with our laundry to landscape is you basically are doing a a bifurcation of your drainage pipe. You're, you're putting a T connection on your drainage pipe. And then you're putting a very simple gravity flow pipe that goes under the floor and then goes out to the landscape where it's connected to these various mulch pits that I was describing through very simple irrigation tubing. So I think an issue that we really need to take on is that when, when a person doing a, a project or a rehabilitation says it's impracticable, that should, in my belief, should require either an inspection or a review by a certified installer. So I, you know, I, I, I don't want to impose huge costs on, on homeowners that are trying to improve their living conditions. But I can tell you, installing a laundry to landscape system is very inexpensive compared to the cost of a remodel. We're talking about probably under two thousand dollars and that's being pretty liberal because there's no mechanical, there's no electrical work involved in a simple gravity-fed laundry to landscape system. So when this first came into effect, staff would sometimes refer some of the folks to me and I would go out and look at, you know, look at the project and we would talk about it. And we, you know, usually we could get to the point where they would at least stub it out so that it would be ready to go. And I think those folks that did stuff it out a few years ago were probably pretty glad they did during the drought because they could continue to irrigate during the drought. So I think we really have to consider adding a condition that if somebody self-certifies as being impracticable, that that would require an inspection or a review by a certified installer. So, you know, I, I think the other suggestion you had on page twenty-two, I think it was, of alternatives is, is excellent. So I do think offsetting, if it is impracticable, offsetting it by limiting turf, putting in a rain garden, planting native pollinators, which I think, you know, most people in Marin are very supportive of. Rainwater catchment is, is a great way to offset it and, and usually pretty inexpensive, especially with our rebate. So I hope I haven't overtalked. I'm pretty enthusiastic about gray water. I think it could be a source of a lot of extra surplus supply. And I think it can be improved. It's a work in progress. I appreciate everything you're doing and I know it's not easy to do what you're doing because it's changing kind, the perception. And that's, that's a very hard thing to do. But I think we can do it. I think we have to adapt. And I think this could be a good, a good piece of it. So with that, I will stop talking.
Thanks, Larry. Other board comments? Okay, then, then I'll, I want to give my thanks to Carrie. I, I agree with Larry that there's tremendous potential here. I think other pieces, I mean, particularly on gray water. I think the piece I'm surprised not to see is increased financial incentives, right? And increased, you know, outreach about this. I, I, I think it's great that you've done the kind of surveying you have, but given the relatively low level of participation, for, you know, whatever reason, it seems to me the opportunity there is, you know, much higher to be, you know, there are any number of strategies and, you know, we've, we've talked about all of them to increase participation, whether it's outreach or additional financing. This is exactly the kind of thing that we're looking to be analyzed. Excuse me, in the, you know, in the midas analysis that we were talking about just earlier. But Carrie, can you talk a little bit about why? I mean, I, I just, I just didn't see increasing the, the incentives to be part of what you're, what you're thinking about.
Uh, yeah, so we, you know, I mean, we've only made the program change, right? Two years ago, right? So it's, it is, you know, fairly recent. We have done quite a bit of extensive outreach around it and folks who are participating in the webinars. You know, while we have high participation in the webinars, we still are having fairly low uptake in, in the technology. So we're, you know, I don't know if, if just increasing the incentive will, will be the motivator, right? It's as folks learn whether or not, they decide whether or not it's appropriate for them. You see those, those handful of folks who seem to be interested, you know, kind of move forward on it.
Mm-hmm. And, yeah, I mean, I'm not saying that I have a crystal ball. I'm just saying that, you know, there's experience in other parts of the world and I think you guys have done a good job doing outreach. And I think the point you made earlier, which is that people are still learning about this. It's still a relatively new program. You know, I think Larry's point that, you know, I think it's, you know, it takes a while for things like this to become normalized. I'm just suggesting that our rebate is relatively low. And so I would think that considering, you know, there could be, you know, some sort of polling or surveying done to explore whether, or even at the end of the webinars, you know, what would, you know, just even asking, you know, some polling questions there, you know, what, what rebate would you be looking for? You know, would, would you find compelling to, you know, to move forward with these options? I'm just saying there's a lot of ways formally and, and more formally to get a sense of, you know, what is the price point that might move greater engagement? I'm certainly not suggesting it's the only thing. I'm just suggesting it's one thing that doesn't seem to be on the list.
Right.
I think that's a great idea to do that.
Thanks. Um, I think the other question that I have about this is, I, I, I think these are great options and I know time is limited here, but there are other distributed, and I really appreciate your bringing forward distributed infrastructure. There's other elements that we work on, that you work on, Carrie, at the district, that we provide incentives for that are arguably fall under that category. You know, everybody uses these words differently, but, you know, the water technology that we provide incentives for, you know, for example, and, you know, other types of, you know, onsite reuse that are a little more sophisticated. You know, are you, are you planning to bring back? And even the rebates for stuff that's been around for a while, you know, like, you know, you know, toilets, you know, low water washing machines, all the rest of it. Turf, all of that is forms of distributed infrastructure in the sense that they're all water supply. You know, they all go to long-term water supply. They're not annual, short-term behavioral fixes. So I don't know if you're planning to do a further, you know, this kind of analysis on those options as well.
Uh, yeah, we just, I mean, we, we certainly have all, all the, all the data behind all of our programs and you're absolutely right. Many of them, if not all of our water efficiency offerings would kind of fall under this distributed infrastructure umbrella. And we just were focusing on gray water, rainwater, recognizing kind of an opportunity in doing the analysis around the ordinance and kind of change in participation or change in program design participation. You know, just kind of focusing in on those two this time.
Right. Do you see, Carrie, any, you know, I mean, you may have touched on this, but do you see opportunities to be working with the municipalities on this, to be offering additional incentives? So, I mean, for example, you know, there, there are, there are actions that can be taken that are somewhat outside of the water district's jurisdiction, but they could also be providing some support. I mean, if nothing else on the financial side, the county is getting, you know, a great deal of, you know, the county has more access to some of the federal dollars than the water district does, for example. But even, you know, in terms of incentives or program outreach, you know, there's a lot we can be doing with our cities and with the county. Is that a part of your?
Yeah, we, we've had conversations where timing hasn't been great as far as getting it in, you know, into someone like Mick Stop's budget, right? So, but they do see the value. They do promote our programs and we have started having conversations with them about cost share, recognizing that they are also getting, you know, it's helping to meet their goals and, you know, initiatives and targets that they've established. So those conversations do, do occur and I think they continue to build.
Yeah, so I don't know if the board or the, the public are, are familiar, but when you're talking about Mick Stop, you're really talking about the MS four permit requirements that the county, the cities are operating under, right?
Correct. Yes.
Um, and those permits do require some level of decrease in the amount of water going into our sewer systems, right?
Uh, yeah, into our storm drains primarily, right? And so they're looking at, not only that, but they also require, you know, when someone pulls a permit to do work on a residential structure, you know, that they, you know, are limiting the, or maximizing the, you know, permeable pay, you know, ground covers, et cetera, you know, not paving, not, not, not selling a bunch of concrete, you know, in their, in their, in their, on their site. So those kinds of things, right? So there's mutual benefits for, for what they're promoting and what we're promoting. And so working with them is, continues to build, like I said.
Okay. Um, so this is not an action item, but it was a very helpful presentation. Monty, Larry, Jack, did any of you want to weigh in on any of this?
No, I'm good.
I, I want to go back on just a couple of points. I think another critical gap in the program is, is the lack of trained installers. So I think that's critical. If we can encourage that, and there's a number of contacts, Carrie, that I, I'd like to send to you offline that could help you, that there's a kind of an experienced cohort of gray water installers in the East Bay. And I think they could help expand some of our training options over here. But I'd like to, I'll send those to you just in an email. So that was, that was one point I wanted to make. The other point is, I think we might want to amend the ordinance that if the gray wa, if gray water is impractical, impracticable after inspection or certification by, you know, a qualified installer, that these other options be required. These are all very low-cost options, especially with our rebates. So I think we might want to consider amending the code instead of it just being a gray water code to be a water efficiency code or amending our water efficiency code to add these other options. So that would give people more flexibility and more choices, but ultimately would save the district and save the community. Some water, some potable water use, quite a bit, actually. And it would give people, you know, the flexibility to really modify what they're doing for the conditions on their property. So I would like to bring that forward at a future meeting, you know, no rush on it. But I think that could be a pretty, pretty elegant way of handling some of the different conditions that we see throughout the district. I'm not going to ask for a second yet, so.
Oh, I'm, I'm certainly in. Do we have public comments on this item, Terry?
Yes, we have a couple. Phil Sauter and Ed Jamison. Go ahead, Mr. Sauter.
Uh, thank you and, and thank you, Carrie. I, I was really amazed in looking at the general managers' report and this presentation of how many conservation balls you have in the air. I get dizzy trying to keep track of all of that. I was also glad to see some numbers assigned to these various options. The number for me that sticks in my mind is the outdoor usage of all our residential customers, which I believe is in the range of four to five thousand acre feet annually. To me, that's kind of the bogey. And as I look at that kind of conservation, what it would be worth to us? And I look at that relative to other water supply options we're looking at. I look at the D cell options, for example, and I think we're somewhere between three thousand and five thousand dollars and an acre foot for D cell. What if we were to say that for conservation, we'd be willing to spend four thousand dollars an acre foot? And let's say that we went after those, half of that five thousand acre feet of outdoor usage. I think that's somewhere like around ten million dollars we'd be willing to spend if we could make a substantial dent in our outdoor water usage through incentive programs and through conservation programs. And I'm wondering if in your bag of tricks, there are one or two conservation programs that you're working on that you think would have the potential to deliver two thousand acre feet a year in savings? And if you had, say, eight million dollars to spend on that, could you come up with a program, say, for turf replacement that would really make it worth people's while to consider maybe getting rid of half the lawns we have or twenty-five percent of the lawns? So that's, that's kind of my question. I like the idea that the numbers are coming to the surface. I like the idea that we're getting close to being able to compare those with other water supply options. And now my only question is, are, are we thinking simple enough in terms of just a finite number of programs? And are we thinking big enough in terms of the budget that it might take to bring in a couple or three thousand acre feet of savings annually? Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I couldn't agree more. I think that's exactly the questions we've been asking for quite a long time. So thank you for putting it quite that succinctly, Phil. Um, Carrie, I'm sure you don't have an answer on the spot, but is that, are those some things we can work on and do you have some initial thoughts for us?
I'm, I, yes, those are things we would continue to work on, right? Of course, like turf removal is going to be, it's our low hanging fruit, right? That is going to be our focus. And I think that, you know, not only, you know, and that is, you know, we do incorporate that into our, the, the conservation element, incorporate into the strategic water supply assessment. So more, more to come on that. Yeah, for sure.
Okay.
Mr. Ed Jamison, please.
Yes, thanks. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All I've, I have a modest garden. It gives me great pleasure. All I've read, read indicates that gray water cannot be used in drip system. Perhaps with a robust maintenance intensive filtering, but I doubt it. And a satisfaction survey of only ten or eleven respondents is hardly definitive. It's just consistent with a tiny number of customers who have stepped up to dealing with the many complications after about eight times as many people come to the seminars. As for rainwater catchment, virtually every year we get zero rainfall for six months, from May one to November one. It's a feasible idea in the rainy northeast, but it offers insignificant opportunities in our area. And finally, past quantifications of benefits show tiny acre foot savings for all the complications and expense to users. Ratepayers must not be forced to pay for ideas that offer insignificant acre foot savings, in many cases accompanied by significant complications to their lives. And as for demanding that if gray water is not installed, a Las Vegas-type landscape will be required. The board is way overstepping its appropriate role in our lives here. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no further speakers.
Okay, I think that brings us to the end of our agenda. Thanks, everybody. Have a good weekend.
Okay, thank you all.